In order to move this forward, it has to be recommended to council again to see if it passes or not, is that correct? If it goes through.
Yeah, so if you, if you want this to proceed, you have to put it back to council, you know, recommend it be referred to council. If there was information, further information that you wanted, you could direct staff to get that information.
Yeah, that was, that was my next question. It went through the process, but I'm still not quite satisfied with, with information. I think there should be a little direct staff to find out more information on, on whether this is a good thing or, not that it's a bad thing, but there has to be more information on what, what this is going to look like at the end if we do pass this, and where does it take off from there, right? I mean, does every household have an opportunity to stick a shingle up and say prayer meeting here tonight, 10 percent discount on your taxes? Is that, that what it's going to wind up being doing? I don't, I don't know. I think we need more information.
So, the motion would be to direct staff to look into the tax implications?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Tax implications. And perhaps at our next committee of the whole, we could discuss this again.
Okay. Yeah? Wait one second.
Yeah.
So you don't have to turn your light off, what I do?
Sorry, yes. The, the part of the Assessment Act that provides a property exemption, exemption for churches reads in part, "Every church and place of worship and the land used in connection therewith, and every churchyard and church burial ground and every church hall used for religious or congregational purposes exclusively save only for occasion, occasions specially authorized by church authorities, and for which no revenue in excess of $100 per annum is received," and it goes on, "is exempt." Okay? And so, I think we'd want to make sure from Assessment Services, the way they interpret that, you know, is, you know, the question I had for, for Jerry and where he's going to try and find the answer is, a lot of churches have residences for their clergy, and those residences, we need to know if those are taxed or not, or if they, or if PVC, PVSC deems that to be a use in conjunction. And if it is, then we would assume that the residence of the person who is the clergy of, you know, who's occupying the rest of the house would, would be eligible for the exemption.
So I guess that would be my motion, I mean, direct staff to look into more of the, the, the stuff.
And Jeff, could we, even though, I know that we sold our congregation at St. Ambrose, sold the old Gleep House next door to somebody, then we bought a residence for a parish priest up on Pleasant Street, so that would, could you see if that, that must follow? So that must follow, even though we had one, it must have been exempted, it was on the same property. And then, we bought, in other words, we're going to find all those answers? Because it's, it could be a Pandora's box.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Okay, so the motion, who seconded the motion? He's good. Who seconded the motion?
I think I did.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, you did now. Any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried? Did you want, I didn't even see a light. Sandy, just do the pss. Because I can't, sometimes I don't see Danny's. Okay. PAC recommendation. Terms of reference, proposed amendments, UNSM Towns Caucus. We went through that. Councilor Landry?
But, is this on the right form? Is this the right set of amendments?
All of these apps.
This is the big concern, because the document that we were given was, was, the amendment was a little different than the other document. There were two sets, and there's a big difference between the, they were amended later, so I mean, I'm, I like what we've done, if something's going to happen to them, but I hate to see this go to town, to UNSM Board of Directors, saying, "Oh, you guys filled out the wrong form, too bad," blah, 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 blah.
So there is something, I think, in between there. I think Lyle told me that last week, because you must have called him or?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, he basically said there's, there's something in there, but it's, it's basic, I say it's basically the same. I guess I got to get that. I thought maybe you had the? Yeah, exactly, and they didn't send, okay. I thought you got sent.
So I'm going to craft a motion. So I move that the Town of Yarmouth submit our recommendations on the proposed amendments to the Town Caucus terms of reference in accordance to, with the document to which they gave us.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Contrary? Carried? Excuse me, I don't know what's wrong with me, but it's not good. Request for decision, Maude Lewis Trail lighting. Who had this one?
Okay, so this was a, a matter that was referred to staff. It was about lighting on the Maude Lewis Trail that goes between Parade Street and Stars Road along the Clements Avenue street right-of-way. And the most cost-effective way of providing some illumination along the trail would be to use existing poles and to install LED lights directed towards the trail. They are on what would be the other side of the road, so they would be, have to be tilted so that the, the projection from the LED streetlights would, would actually be in the direction. I did notice, I mean, there is one LED light that is near the beginning of the trail on the, on the Parade, Parade Street end. So, that is, that's for your consideration. The, the cost would, would be fairly insignificant, and that would provide some illumination along that trail. If you wish to go further in terms of investment, I guess the thinking was, is that now that we own the entire right-of-way, it might not be too long before we open that street.
Exactly.
And if we invest in trail-type lighting, that you would put on a kind of a wooded trail, it might not be too long before that lighting is actually installed along what could be a fairly busy street with maybe, hopefully businesses or residences or whatnot along it, so that's for your consideration. Get, get something in place, yeah.
Okay. Councilor Landry?
Realizing that we are, of course, we've been talking about Clements Avenue extension for years, and I'm not getting any younger. I'm suggesting that we should light the darn thing now rather than later. And furthermore, I mean, it, it's, it's active, you know, it's, it's all part of our whole model to make our community more active, and that's a very used path, it's a very safe path. And even if Clements Avenue does open up as a roadway, we can still use it as the link path, you know, to it, so I'd make a motion that this be referred to budget for consideration in the next fiscal year.
Seconded, any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Interactive bus shelters.
Thank you, Your Worship, and we all know our transit service is going to start in the next couple of days, and it's going to be successful, and going to be well-used. I'd like to make a motion that staff be directed to come up with concepts for an interactive interpretive bus shelters and investigate alternative ways to fund these shelters.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Councilor Landry?
I, I, I like it, I'm just curious, what, what is an interactive? I get the interpretive bus shelter, but I'm just, to the mover, I'm just asking, Councilor Mooney, what's an interactive bus shelter? Is like a screen with a computer, or?
It could be games, we have the planner here, and she, she's been looking at bus shelters right across Canada and right across, I guess, North America and the rest of the world, and she has some ideas for bus shelters. I thought my ideas would be something like, one of the shelters could be like a Maude Lewis house, and one could be a lobster trap, or one could be a, something else, but then Caroline brought it to the next step, and she said there, she wanted to make some that were interactive, so Caroline's right here, and she said she's going to stay, maybe she can discuss that part, because the CAO, over the last couple of days, sent some information to myself when I requested about the Department of Municipal Affairs, I think at that time, with Mark Fury, was there, now that we have a new minister, how we can use some of the active transportation funds for, I thought we could use it for a new bus, but we can use it for a second-hand bus, or for some shelters, or some other things, so that's some of the ways we could fund it, but then Caroline had some other ideas about what the shelters would actually be.
Go ahead, Caroline. Oh, did you want to speak?
Nope.
It's, it was just a really fun idea. I sent, I don't think I sent it to all the councillors, just the couple that I'd been talking to about it on the bus, but there's a whole bunch of examples all over the world of, what they do is they design the shelter based on the place where it's at, so they're different in, at every stop, and they're, the interactive concept is kind of that, you know, you could sit in a bus stop board waiting for the bus, either something to do, even if it's something little like a tic-tac-toe game, or, I mean, it's just, it's just a concept that would be really interesting to see, to design, maybe even something worth engaging the architecture students at Dow to help work through, or something like that, yeah.
Deputy?
I guess I've already started, Caroline. I'm, I'm working with the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia and, and the pharmacy to come up with a, I hope, an interesting design for Alma Square.
So, good?
But this is something you can have fun with, right Caroline? This is kind of fun part of the job.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
It'd be great for the town, okay.
I, I know, there were some years ago that I, I think my first term on council, that there was, there's people out there that put up these shelters, and it didn't go over very, very well with the committee that was sitting around the table at that time, the PAC at that time, about, they had a proposal that, there was a gentleman that was in the advertising business, and Phil, you had the occasion to see some of those shelters on the way going to Digby, how they do theirs, they have advertising, whatever, on, on one portion of theirs, just small advertising. And they had people out there that are willing to put up. I don't know if they are or not now, but at that time there was, and this gentleman was prepared to pour, pour the pads, put up the shelters, he gave the pictures of the shelters and everything, they were very tasteful looking, they were similar to the ones out here by the Town Hall, so if there's any, any information out there, I think that should be sought also, if there's people out there that are willing to put up these shelters along the, in towns or cities or whatever, for a certain percentage of, of the shelter itself be used for advertising, that should be looked at too. And it, it could save, save the town, the taxpayers a lot of money, if that's just only one other option, that, that should be sought, should be looked at, so that's just my thought.
Question? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Grant allocation 2016-17, CAO?
This would be the point where you would make that motion about the $70,000 and the $305,000 for grants to organizations.
Your Worship would like to make a motion that for the 2016-17 fiscal year, that the amount of money available to grants to organizations be 70,000, 75,000 Jeff, or 70? What do we, 70, let's go for 70,000, and for tax, tax redemption would be 305,000.
Moved and seconded. Why does this not go to budget? Just because? Just something we do? Yeah, I mean, there was a reason. Good. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I just, I guess the question that I have, or the concern that I have, is that at 70,000, how much did we spend last year? And I wonder if it's enough, that's all. I know that budget is tight, and, and, and I just wondered if we need to adjust, if the requests aren't any less than what they have been in the past, and there are more, because there's different activities taking place in the community. And I just wondered what we perhaps actually spent last year, and, and if, if we did spend a certain dollar more than 70,000 last year, that maybe we could consider using the last year's figure as our minimum, or maximum, I should say.
Jerry, are you looking at that?
Have him a second.
Did you want to say something in the meantime?
Yeah, Your Worship, I, I agree with Jim on this. I liked it when we had a bit of a cushion, that we had that, I think it was $10,000, I mean, I remember when we started this council, we had an $80,000 figure, of which 70,000 we spent, but we kept 10,000 back for those last-minute requests that came in. And I kind of liked that, it gave us that leeway, instead of saying, "No, no, no." I, I forget who around the table brought it up, but sometimes there's this last-minute thing happens, that something comes in that we luck into as a community, a major event, or something that maybe the room levy won't work, weren't exactly solved, or it wouldn't help them with their funding, so it gives us that little cushion. So that's, I don't know if we can work that in, it would be nice to see that back, because that gives us that little edge, because right now, once the 70,000 is expended, we're done for the year, that's in essence.
You could allocate 60 now and save 10 for later.
You know, but, in, in all, in all honesty, and I, I, I agree, I mean, you, you want to be able to do the best you can. I love the cushion, but I also, I also feel very strongly that, that we shouldn't be the first place they come to. And, and often we are, and, and so, I think two years ago, somebody sat here, and my question was, "Do you need the money?" Well, no. And, and yet, we gave the money anyway, and it just, it blew my mind. So we have to be careful to pay attention to, to what they're saying in their applications. Have they gone somewhere else? Are they looking for money elsewhere? Are they, you know, looking for sponsors? And I think the town is tapped out too, as far as sponsors go. Everybody's getting tapped out, but, I, I mean, I'm easy either way, but.
Yeah, the last two years, pretty consistent, just a few hundred dollars under 70,000 both years.
Few under 70?
Yeah, so basically 70,000. I think last year, though, wasn't there one for a couple thousand dollars? They returned it, Linda, because they said they ended up not needing it?
Yeah.
But.
Could be, yeah, the Sharks family, they didn't do their thing, got the event back.
Okay, you're on, and then council?
Yeah, the other thing, to Your Worship, that kind of bothers me, sitting around the table too long, we have the same organizations coming back. It's like a, I mean, I spoke with a couple of these organizations already, and they're back again, and suggesting, you know, "Hey, you know, we're not like the ever group," and, I don't know, maybe it's time that we looked at the polls, you know, today's not the day to say, "Okay, we'll, we'll entertain you for, say, three years, but after that, you have to take a year off, literally, before we entertain you again." I don't know, I, I mean, we've been funding the same groups, and same groups, and same groups, and same groups, which is fine, I mean, there are certain events like CFest, that's a very valid event, I mean, they, they do very good things for this community, they bring a lot in, but there's a lot of groups that have a very, they're like a close club, they're a small group that serves their members, or serves a particular area, and you're kind of wondering, is this the good use of taxpayers' money? Maybe we should put a policy in place that says, "Okay," you know, if you, if you're starting an event, or an organization, or you're doing something, and you can't become self-sustainable in five years, something's wrong with what you're doing, you should be able to, to balance. I mean, the Knights of Columbus comes here looking for money for their taxes, which is fair ball, and that's, that's fair, but they don't come looking for money to support their club, or their organization, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's where I'm having problems, these groups are coming in every year, every year, as you say, Your Worship, so I don't know, it's something, it kind of bothers me that we keep looking at the same group all the time, maybe it's time that we should try to suggest they become a little bit more sustainable, or maybe more imaginative in getting funding.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Reading some of the requests from different organizations, the nonprofit and for profit, whatever, it always, always, I have, I, I read some of them, and I listened to the people that came here, and they gave presentations and stuff, and I've asked some of them different questions, so I said, "So what do you do with the money and stuff?" And some of them always usually carry a balance, not a big balance, but some of them do carry balances, and some of them, you say, "Well, we use the money, we give them out for prizes, and we award different things for charities, and other charities and stuff," so the money that they get from us goes to give to other people. And it, it shouldn't work like that, it really shouldn't work like that, because this A, this AAA or AA hockey tournament, stuff like that, that's, to me, that's, that's pretty legitimate, they want to bring people in, and they want to have a function in that area, that's great. Not that the other ones are not, but it just, it just don't make a whole lot of sense that you would want to take money from the taxpayers and give it to some other organizations that are part of what you're trying to fund and, and raise money to, to give away, and it, it doesn't work like that. But giving, going a $10,000 bumper for latecomers or whatevercomers, you know, I got a little problem with that, because if we're going to do that, then we're going, we're reversing what we said a year or two years ago, that we keep money back and hold money back, because people didn't, didn't come and they didn't put in for the grants to organizations, and so we're going to allow $10,000, we're going to give people another opportunity, that you get the grants from organizations that's already ended in January the 31st, but if you come after that, or there's some functions that are taking place, whatever, whatever, then you can come and you can qualify for funding, maybe, if you give a presentation to council. I think that, that might be opening up another Pandora's Box, I think, you know, times are hard, times are tough, times are hard. The town needs a lot, a lot, a lot of things, and they need a lot of, of organizations coming forward to give their presentations and seek funding, but there's only, only enough money to go around for, you know, a once, a one time, and if you're going to extend the grants to organizations, then we ought to have a different policy put in place where we have one for January the 31st, and one for September the 31st, or December the 31st, whatever. And I'm, I'm not for that either, but it, you, we're, we're trying to create two different scenarios, two different types of funding here, and, and I don't think we should be going down that road. So, I, I think we should give this some really careful thought, it's nice to be considerate and look ahead for other people coming forward, looking for funding, but, you know, there's, there's lots of things that need to be done here in the Town of Yarmouth, and one is not always supplying the right amount of money or cash for everybody that wants to come and, and bring their proposals forward. Sometimes you just have to say no, and "We're sorry," but perhaps if you go the route that we have for funding that we already have in place, that's the route you should be going.
Councilor Mooney?
Yeah, and just looking at it, Your Worship, I think there's three of these requests on the, the sheet, sheet this year that are going towards paying the rent out at the Mariner Center, right? We got the Halle Ballou, and we have the Relay for Life that we're paying, you know, they're out raising funds for, for Cancer Society, and they're out raising funds for the Hospital Foundation, and we're paying a part of, or a portion of, the rent for the Mariner Center, so it raises an interesting point, then you have other situations where we want to, and you hear it all the time, and you see it on Facebook all the time, is, is, you know, Yarmouth could have had the Warfrat Rally, but we all know that, you know, Glenn, Glenn Backout in Digby created that event and ran with it, and, and became very successful, but here we are, we're trying to get an event that's comparable to the Warfrat Rally, we had a very successful event last year, in the, in the Roaring, Roaring Antique Car Club, had 5,000 people down on Main Street on Friday and Saturday, and they were looking for $11,000, and I gave them, in my grant application, I gave them all $11,000, because I think we should give that event every opportunity to grow and to match what they have in Digby, right? So, I concentrated my grant application process to things like Councilor Mack Isaac said, to the Bantam AA Hockey Championships that's coming to Yarmouth, the Roaring Antiques Auto Club, the things that are going to bring people to the Town of Yarmouth, even though I think we short-shifted them the last couple of years, we have, at one time, was the largest funded tourism project in Nova Scotia, was the Wedgeport Tuna.
Tuna Festival.
Tuna Festival. At one time, the Department of Tourism used to give those guys $40,000 a year. This was all over the world, and here, last year, they asked for $1,000, you know what we gave them? 200, right? And they draw literally thousands of people to Wedgeport over two days, right? I gave them the full amount last year, and I give them the full amount this year. But I've geared my grants to organizations that are going to bring, bring people to Town of Yarmouth. We have a couple of other things in there, and I see Frank here, it's very important, and we have two teams going away this year. Frank, where are you guys going this year?
Medicine Hat.
Medicine Hat, they're going to represent Yarmouth, they won the Canadian Championship last year, that event probably brought in close to a million dollars to the Town of Yarmouth last year, the over 35 baseball championships. They can't wait to come back here every year. And we also have a team, and even though it's got a funny name, the Yarmouth Barking Squirrel Slow Pitch Team, they're going to British Columbia this year, representing Yarmouth. They've got 15 or 16 girls or ladies that are going to British Columbia to represent the Town of Yarmouth in the national championship. Those kind of things, when you send them to other communities, they're going to be ambassadors for us, so it makes it hard, you know, we haven't had a tax increase since we've been around the table in 10, seven years? We haven't increased taxes? And we all know, what Jeff says, the cost of municipal government goes up 9% a year. I don't know, we are either the first or the last resort for people coming and ask for grants to organizations. Municipal government, like I said earlier, isn't built in a vacuum, or isn't built in a, in a box, right? There's going to be events, people are going to come in, Tina's son's going to be on a hockey tournament that's going to, you know, get the Atlantic Championships, he might be coming here in September, or November, or October, have an invitational tournament, those are outside the realm of what this falls under, so it's a hard situation, we have very limited resources, we have $70,000 to give out, and we have $217,896 in requests.
How much?
$217,896 in requests, and we have $70,000 to give out. And if you do the big ones, like what the Coal Shed is, they want 15 to 17,000, you know, you give 10 or 12,000 to CFest, 10 or 12,000 to the Yark, the 11 or 12,000 that they want for the Roaring Antique Car Club, guess what? You only got, out of 40 organizations, you only got $20,000 out of 40 organizations to give money to. You know, it's, it's, it's a hard situation, they're not fun to fill out, there's going to be winners and losers, but I, I don't count them as winners and losers, they have to be sustainable, and they have to go out and look for alternative ways to raise money, but it's hard.
It does make sense. Councilor Landry?
Well, the other concern I have is the, on the other flip side is the $305,000 tax thing, where we've got groups, and I'm looking, I'm not naming groups, if there are groups in that list, I suggest, who get money from various other partners, it's the federal government, or the provincial government, through grants, and I've filled in a fair chunk of these over the years, and I recall seeing in any grant application, a set for taxes. In many cases, you were able to put in your grant request, if you're putting in taxes or an item. Now, I don't know whether they're still doing it or not, but, you know, when I'm looking at, you know, I, some are legit, for example, the Lions Club or the Columbus Club, they're all nonprofit, they're not involved, but then there's some other groups who do have a fair amount of income coming in from grants and from provincial level, or projects, et cetera, and in the good old days, they used to be, have a, a certain little cushion there for taxes, and yet, they're asking for 100%, and I really have an issue with that, because I'm just wondering, how many of these groups are getting money to pay their taxes, yet are not paying their taxes, and coming to us, and that money is being used as part of their operating amount? So that is, that is, that is a concern that I've always had, and I'm thinking, okay, we, we're very generous in that regard, but on the other hand, you know, you look at the Yarmouth in Town and County Sports Heritage Association, we're giving them a grant, they don't own their, they own their building, they own their building, but then I, oh yeah, they've asked for in lieu of taxes, so they've asked for a grant in lieu of taxes, so they're coming in twice. They want, they want a grant for their operation, and then on the other hand, they're coming in looking for a tax break as well, and that's not the only one, so, you know, there's only so much money that we can give, and I mean, that's, it is, it is a concern, I mean, I'd like to help them all out, but as Phil pointed out, you've got 220, almost $1,000 in requests here, somebody's going to get disappointed, and it's unfortunate, but, I don't know, and then you have some groups who are asking for status, who, for assistance, who just inherited a fair chunk of change, you know, and you kind of look at that as well, you know, so, and to me, if, if the bottom line in a group, and we always base this on need, we've always based this on, yeah, we always have based it on need, but some of those groups have money.
The applications don't come in based on need.
No, they're not anymore. But we used to, in the good old days, have it based on need. In other words, hey, we are losing money every year in this event, you know. You take the Coal Shed Festival, a good example. For the amount of money they collect for the food bank, it would be, I always said this, it'd be cheaper for us to cut a check for the amount of the PA system rental, give it to the food bank. Life would be good because they'd get a heck of a lot more through our check than they would through all the work that Phil does. But we all know the Coal Shed Festival brings in all kinds of attention, makes the waterfront vibrant. It's a very good investment, you know, that we do. So, I don't know. I, I really think we, we probably not asked the new council, should really look at this whole grants to organizations thing. Look at the whole, where they're going, where we're going with it. Because I really think it's something we've always, one of the things we've always done it, always done it, always done it, always done it. But it doesn't mean that we have to always do it. We may wanna just take a little second chance and see what's going on there. Just, just my thought.
I agree. Okay. So, was there a motion?
motion on the floor for 70 and 301.
70 and 305. Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary?
I think one question for Jeff.
Motion carried. Go ahead.
If I'm reading this right, Jeff, when you go to tax request, and the grand total is 305,000, on the back, 305,000, so on the, the total request, it is 298,41836. So, we could do 100% on every one, right? That's best, based on last year's tax?
Okay. So, we can give, I just gotta ask this. So, we can give 100%, but you don't have to. Right? Because I don't, I don't think I've ever given 100. Okay. That's right. Okay. So, the motion's passed. We're good now. Next. Request for decision smoking and vaping bylaw amendment. CAO?
Your worship, we've had some help with this. And Caroline, could you, could you introduce our helpers and maybe talk just briefly about how they came to be our helpers and?
This is Raleigh and Jake. Raleigh and Jake both have planning degrees from Dalhousie University. Raleigh is my little brother, and Jake graduated with Raleigh. And they were looking to get some experience in working in a municipal environment. And they volunteered to come down and work with me for the month, for a month. And they're actually living with me as well. So, Jeff, I, I mentioned this to Jeff, and he was pretty eager to get some bylaws looked at. And that's what they've been doing for him. You guys have been here, what, almost two weeks now? Yep. Yep. So, they, this is a report they put together.
So, because, because one of their goals was to, was to experience the process, we wouldn't look, normally bring bylaw stuff to committee of the whole. We'd bring it to council. But, you know, I wanted them to have the experience of presenting information to you on the bylaw side. And they may get the opportunity, if they're around in two weeks on Thursday night, to come to a council meeting. But at least I want them to have the opportunity to explain what they've done and to field any questions you may have about what their recommendations are.
I don't seem to have it. Oh, okay. You know, okay, good. All right. Not good that you don't have it, but good that. Did you want to say something before they start?
No, you want a shot, he said. I think it's the most I've ever talked in my life.
Well, good. Now we can start working backwards.
This, this, the smoking bylaw here, now, this is something that you two looked at and prepared? This is not, okay, okay. I got you. This is, it's a recommendation to council now. Has the solicitor had a chance? That was one of my questions, to look at this, and he probably hasn't. Are we gonna deal with this today? Or is this just an exercise for the?
Well, it's, it's an exercise to, to understand what their direction is on this, where they're recommending you go. And now, now this came from council. You remember Mr. Goodett made his presentation?
Yes.
Was the recommendation to council, staff, work with Mr. Goodett and his committee to come up with a bylaw.
That's right.
So, I asked.
He, he asked, and we, we.
And you, and you directed.
We directed.
And you directed staff. And so, I asked Raleigh and, and Jake to, to do that. And so, they met with, well, I'll let you, I'll let them talk about what they did. But no, this has been very compressed work in a short period of time. And so, the solicitor has not had a chance to review it. This is more about what, what they're recommending in terms of the approach and the specifics. And then we'll, we'll have the solicitor review it before it goes.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm reading, reading it here, and it says something about any sidewalks, immediate lots, and all town-owned property, this, that. I mean, we talked, we talked a whole lot of stuff that night, or a whole lot of things were mentioned. And we talked ourselves and stuff, and through recreation and different signage and a whole bunch of stuff. And I see a lot of that in here, and, and within so many meters and all the other good stuff, it's in here. It looks, it looks pretty compact. It looks, you guys got a lot of work on it. But my only concern is that, is this enforceable? Has our solicitor had, had ample time to look at it? We haven't had time to really look at it. And if this is just an exercise and I have to look at it, and we can refer it to another committee of the whole or whatever, it would be more tasteful for me than just to make any kind of decision on this today.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
All right. As, in regards to compliance, there was a study done in Bridgewater. They implemented a smoke-free outdoor spaces bylaw. And they had 86% of smokers in the area reported voluntary compliance. Sorry. The town of Bridgewater implemented a smoke-free outdoor spaces, and 86% of the smokers reported voluntary compliance. So, that would address your issue that you had with enforcement. So, we're hoping that it is self-enforced through, like, people saying, like, hey, you're not allowed to smoke in this area. There's a sign right there. So, as it says in this, we're focusing on self-enforcement. But it does mention it, number, or section seven. Anyone that violates this bylaw is guilty of an offense punishable on summary conviction. So, it would be dependent on. Which part, sorry? Section seven says, any person who violates this bylaw is guilty of an offense punishable on summary conviction. But as we said earlier, we want to, the, to focus on education and self-compliance rather than making the community feel like they're being prosecuted.
If, if you go through this page by page, summary, screw it up, most of them, the town property sidewalks, town vehicles, all of them. This is, it's a, it's a concern for me, for the people that will know all of this. And I'm, I'm trying to think of people that were coming walking down the street, walking on the sidewalk, smoking.
So, it would depend on the situation.
Answer that question. Can they walk down the street?
So, if, say, for instance, we set a nine-meter buffer, because Raymond had requested that we do specific streets. And that didn't, it didn't account for, like, economic, economic development. So, say, for instance, if someone is walking down the street, uh, Main Street, we set the nine-meter buffer basically to eliminate smoking on the Main Street and to put it off to side streets because each entrance would basically pass through the other buffer, therefore making the entire street basically eliminated smoke-free, or smoking, sorry.
Okay. Sandy, did you get your question answered?
Yes.
You were just looking for that, that section. CAO?
Yo, I'll hold mine.
You're gonna hold on? Okay. So, so what you're saying, Main Street's gonna be non-smoking? From where to where? What was that?
It, it's dependent on the entrances. So, any portion of Main Street that does not have a commercial entrance could be exempt from that. But it's predominantly most of the Main Street.
And you said in Bridgewater, for example, in Bridgewater, 86% of the people are self-policing.
Yeah. Oh, well, 86% of smokers in the area reported voluntary compliance.
Okay. That's a big number.
That's a big number, just like that.
No, 86% of people saying, okay, I get this. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna smoke in these areas.
How factual is that?
Yeah, I don't know. I'd, I'd say they wouldn't. Who has a light on? You do first.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, my, my issue, and I expressed it when Raymond was here, was, was the idea of having a bylaw that you, that you can't enforce, right? That you're unable to, we don't have the resources to enforce. I tend to, to get squeamish around that stuff because I, I see the emails and I hear the criticism when we can't effectively enforce bylaws that we have. And a classic example would be the, the noise bylaw, right? When we get complaints about, about vehicles that are excessively noisy. And, you know, we're, we have trouble explaining to the public that the, that the intent is to set a standard. No, we can't necessarily enforce it, but it's, it's kind of setting the standard that we expect, you know, residents to, to respect, to, to live close together and, and respect one another's privacy and whatnot. So, that sometimes isn't enough to satisfy all, and so we get the criticism of having bylaws we can't enforce. You know, there have been lots of examples of municipalities imposing, or passing, I should say, bylaws that I wouldn't think are enforceable. But they've had good success with them in terms of educating their communities around a standard they'd like to see the community live up to. And Bridgewater and that, and that bylaw might, may be one example. I know Wolfville's passed some smoking bylaws in the past that, that have later been followed by provincial legislation. So, you know, they got out on the leading edge of some stuff. And, and I don't think they could enforce what they passed, but, but in fact, it, it created a higher level of consciousness. So, I'm concerned about that part of the bylaw because I'm more, I am, I tend to be more aware, perhaps, of the criticisms that come when you can't enforce. But, but I do also recognize that, that, that we have a community that, that will rally around certain things. The one part in here I wanted to draw to your attention, which, which came up in the discussion we had, was, was the whole idea of mandatory signage. So, if we believe that education is, is probably, is perhaps the, the route to more, more awareness around where smoking is inappropriate and so on, if you look at section six, it talks about mandatory signage must be placed on all commercial businesses, town or public property, as listed in section five of the bylaw. So, in all the areas where smoking is prohibited, there would have to be signage. So, it would be an offense in the bylaw not to have a sign.
Yeah, we're in the wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. There was an update that came, I think I was already in the meeting here when it came. And it, I'll just read the section to you. Apologize. And again, we, we deal with this at council, you'll have it. It says, mandatory signage must be placed on all commercial businesses, town or public property, as listed in section five of the bylaw. So, all the areas where smoking is prohibited, it would be an offense not to have it posted. Now, we could go an extra mile and say, look, we, we can provide the signage, we can provide the signs, maybe discounted, maybe do a bulk buy, whatever. So, you would post a sign outside the, the entrance to your business that says, you know, ordinance whatever of the town of Yarmouth prohibits smoking within nine meters of, of the entryway. Like they have the hospital, you know. And, and not everybody is, not everybody's gonna obey it. Not everybody is. But you know, not everybody obeys any law, right? That's why we have guys like Greg and.
Why is that?
Because sometimes people break laws. But the vast majority of people respect, respect laws and respect one another. And would, would, just putting a sign, more signs up in the community, reminding people that there are laws around this, might lead to more education, more awareness, and more compliance. Just a thought.
Just looking at this, when this was drafted, I'm just curious, do we have any properties in town that does not have a nine-meter clearance in the front or a nine-meter clearance in the back? What I'm thinking of, is it possible that we would have a property owner that has a house positioned, say, eight meters from the street and has a backyard of nine meters? Therefore, that person, according to this bylaw, could not smoke on his own property. Am I right or wrong? Is that my interpretation right or wrong? If I have a lot of land, and I'm thinking of a house right now that fits this criteria, I buy my house. I have about eight meters to the street. And my backyard's a really weird backyard. It is very narrow. Technically, I wouldn't be able to go out and smoke on my property. Is that correct?
So, we actually noticed this correction. You're talking, referring to section 5D, right? We actually noticed that we made a mistake there, and we need to include commercial and town properties in that definition. So, to not limit residential because we can't take that right from them.
Because section 4B clearly states, no smoking means any portion of any sidewalk or any portion of land within the street right-of-way. So, that section that you just referred to as under five, whatever it is, would be in conflict with that.
Sorry, which?
So, under your interpretation, 4B states, no smoking area means any portion of any sidewalk or any portion of land within the street right, right-of-way. So, if I live at 57 Clements Avenue, I cannot walk out my front door and smoke on the sidewalk. However, and that's, that's in the interpretation part. And then.
Oh, sorry.
That's the way I would read it. That, yes. So, you would not be able to smoke in front of your house, for example.
No, that's just talking about the smoking area specifically. So, like, say, a playground, you're not allowed to smoke on that street?
No, but 4B states, in this bylaw, no smoking area means any portion of a sidewalk or portion of land within the street right-of-way. So, therefore, yeah, I come out my front door, there's not nine meters from my front door to the sidewalk. I can't, not that there's a sidewalk in front of my house, there isn't, thank God. So, that's good because I don't want a sidewalk. So, if there's no sidewalk in front of the house, you can smoke. That's good. I never just realized that. But if hypothetically there was a sidewalk, I could not, in accordance with 4B, go outside and stand on my sidewalk in front of my house and smoke. Or my guests could not, because my guests know that I'm deathly allergic to cigarette smoke, so they all go out on the, the street. So, that, luckily, there's no sidewalk. Or, but it's a portion of land. So, I guess they get me under the portion of land. So, they can no longer smoke out front of my house, in accordance with 4B. Is that correct?
Our intention was for it to adhere to the Smoke Free Places Act in Nova Scotia. So, that's the next line right after that, right? That says that within four meters of any entrance, you cannot, it's four meters of any entrance, you cannot smoke. But that also does not include a residential area. It, it just defines, like, a commercial space, public space, or town-owned property.
So, we're not, we're talking about specific areas. This isn't the whole town.
No, it's not, it does not include the residential areas.
Oh, so help me, oh, your worship, where does it say that?
This is just a definite, the, the interpretation is just defining a non-smoking area. So, it's, say, I designate a playground to be a non-smoking area, then no one can smoke on that adjacent street or plot of land.
It, it's the areas that are already predefined in the Nova Scotia, the provincial government's no smoking law.
But, but our bylaw does not make reference to that. You could have a very zealous enforcement officer say, you're smoking in front of your house. In accordance with 4B, you could be charged. That's what I'm suggesting, in, under a bylaw. The way it's worded, I'm into the wording?
Yeah, I understand.
That was my only, that's my only concern, it's in the wording. And I just, I, I'm just asking, is that the intent? And I see it says this area must, these area, this area must adhere to the Nova Scotia Smoke Free Purposes Act. No person shall smoke in a non-smoking area. Of course, we already decided a no-smoking area, which means any portion of a sidewalk or portion of land within a street right of way, which would mean people smoking in front of my house.
No, 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 because you have to put the Nova Scotia Smoke Free Places together. Yeah.
That has to be clarified, that's my point, I'm confused.
Yeah, definitely.
Anything that's confusing or you disagree?
Yeah, okay, so just, just so that people understand, we're just gonna add in the, the Smoke Free Places. Okay, anything else? So what do we need to do with this today? Okay, go ahead.
It's all about wording, it's all wording. Now, in some parts it says non-smoking, in other parts it says no smoking. And I'm not a smoker, is, are you a no-smoker or a non-smoker?
Are you referring to Section Four B again?
Uh, just different parts, because I'm thinking, what does the smoke-free? And then they say smoke-free, so there's three bits of language, no smoking, non-smoking, and smoke-free. I'm just thinking we should be consistent with whatever in the wording. So, maybe smoke-free areas, or I'm not sure what the language is, but I'm just a language nut, that's all.
So basically, one of two things, either, either it's all the same, or they are defined separately, if they mean different things. So we would have to have that in there, if it's different. Is that? Yeah, that's just an excuse, don't go there with us. Just teasing you. Well, no, it doesn't give you a right.
I mean, technically, by the way, that we have this bylaw addressed right now, it would, it would also not be allowed to smoke, because it says in the first definition where we define smoking, that includes, uh, like, all smoking products, not just tobacco.
Yeah, it is. Do you wanna put your light on? Go ahead.
I just have a concern about the Main Street. The other ones, the other ones look all, not too bad, you could have some discussion on it, but I, I don't think it should be, myself personally, limited to Main, Main Street, just to, uh, ma- make, make Main Street a non-smoking area.
In our recommendation, we don't make, uh, Main Street a non-smoking area. It should basically do that by itself by setting a nine-meter buffer around each entrance. It should connect the businesses together.
What, you're just talking about business that don't, business that, the employees that come out and in front of their businesses smoked, they're not gonna be allowed to do that. But if I'm walking by their business, I can smoke.
No.
So if I'm walking down Main Street, I can't smoke, if I'm a smoker.
You would have to go off to a side road that was...
Well, that's, that's where I have the problem. Not, not that, that's my, it's my problem, not your problem, you put it in there. But, uh, I, I don't, I think that's a big, that's a big problem for the town of Yarmouth, I think.
I, I just wanna understand why.
Well, because the pe- people that do smoke and walk up and downtown that smoke, uh, why should they, or why would they think that they have to go on a side street and not continue to walk on Main Street, and to, to smoke? That, that would be the problem, it, it would be like, uh, I bought the packs of cigarettes, I paid my taxes and that on them, that's part of my habit is, I have a bad, bad habit or good habit, call it what you want, but if, for me to smoke my cigarette, I can't continue my walk with my friends to walk down Main Street, because it's a non-smoking area. That's, that's it in a nutshell. And I think, I think personally that, that's, that's another Pandora's Box, myself personally. And I don't think we're setting any big, uh, number-one standards here by, by doing that.
Um, in, in this case, we know that, uh, the Nova Scotia Smoke Free Places Law already restricts four meters around every entrance anyways, so that would effectively have made Main Street anyways a smoke-free area. This is just making the businesses have signs to enforce it.
Yep. Any more questions for the gentlemen?
You're not very gentle.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you very much.
Did you have fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's important. C A O?
So they're, they're also working on our, updating our solid waste bylaw, and maybe, uh, by the time, uh, the council rolls around, that may be ready for your review. But, uh, anyway, they've got a couple, a couple hours in the fire. Thanks, guys.
Good stuff, thank you. Does anybody need a five-minute break? Go ahead.
I just noticed, uh, just reading the Smoke Free, um, what they're at. And they, they specify in that, those four meters, it's to places of employment. So maybe that wording should be put in there, because they make specific reference into the Smoke Free Places Act to places of employment. Therefore, wingnuts like me worried about people smoking in front of my house, they can smoke, they can smoke in front of my house all the time they want, they just can't smoke in front of places of employment. Unless they're employed there.
Okay. Request for direction, Bella Lion.
Thank you, well, thank you.
We're almost finished, so we're gonna plow through, but that's a long... Okay, good. Caroline? So the recommendation is that it's recommended the town engage the Colliers International rep and proceed with the next steps for the project with regard to the expansion of wireless network? The wireless network expansion? Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Question's been... If she wants to say anything, but I think we get it.
Okay, yeah, the idea is Bella Lion would like to put in these, this new technology that'll increase our wireless network in the town. And they've offered to work with us to find areas where the wireless connection isn't good and put them in around town.
Excellent. Okay, all those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. That was easy, thank you. Anything that, uh, that ups the ante on that? Thanks, Caroline. Okay, correspondence for action, Choice Housing Committee, re-affordable housing and the municipal planning strategy. Oh, you gotta put a light on, I won't be able to... Oh, okay, no, go ahead.
Regarding the, uh, Bella Lion upgrade, will that help us with our Wi-Fi at all? Do you think?
Who's, who's Wi-Fi?
The town's Wi-Fi? I wonder, just...
Maybe, I don't know, I haven't engaged with them on, on the specifics further, because I wanted to make sure council was interested before I moved forward. So I can get you that information if you're okay with me reaching out.
Thanks very much, Carol.
No, that's, yeah, good. Did you wanna speak to this?
To the letter from Choice? I, I can, um, I've been, pretty much any group in town that'll have me, I've been going and presenting to them, so I do, I've been, I've been on a roll, like, almost one a week lately. Uh, so I presented to Choice Housing, and I'm actually, I attend their meetings fairly regular anyway, about what's going on with the municipal planning strategy review. And, uh, they liked what they heard, and they wanted to know what they could do to support me. And I said, well, it doesn't hurt to let council know, so that's where this letter originated from.
So do we need to do anything with this? Good? Okay. Uh, Yarmouth and area community fund, re-kindness meters. Oh, yeah, go ahead, she came in to speak to me about...
I absolutely love this. I think this is the best thing since sliced bread, if we can find the meters. No, no, we sold them.
Well, I know, but, well, let me tie it by the lunchroom.
We keep a lot of stuff for lunch.
Can we check the fridge for the meters?
Anyway, I, I think, Your Worship, that, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to inquire into, uh, the availability or cost of used meters for the installation as proposed by the Yarmouth Community Fund. Just put it on the floor, two or three of them, if we can find some, I don't know. Basically, the intention is, is they're gonna put these traffic meters, and what towns have done, have taken traffic meters, put them on poles, stuck them on the street, painted them a color, red or whatever, blue or something very obvious, and people would put donations in, these meters, and they would be, go to the community fund, and it would help support the community fund, which is a great idea, or any fund, I think it's a wonderful idea. People could, put them up front of Tim Hortons when people lose change, perfect, or Jim's Store. No, they don't come to Jim's Store with any change.
So who seconded that? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any more discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor? Aye, contrary, motion carried. The motion was to direct staff to look into...
Aye.
Yes. Yes, that, that's all, and they don't come for a grant either. They don't come for a grant, so that's good. They give it away, exactly. Yarmouth Golf and Country Club water and sewer charges. C A O, you're on.
Yes, so this, at this point is for information, I think I emailed you a few weeks back about, uh, the fact that, uh, as our sewer rates have been increasing, we've had a number of inquiries about, uh, how do you get exempt from your sewer charges when the water you use does not go into the sewer system? And we do have a bylaw provision in our sewer charges bylaw for that, where the engineer has to be satisfied by their, to, to his satisfaction, has to be, uh, convinced that the water is not going into the system by a certain percentage, and then I think he makes a recommendation to council on that. So, this is just an example. Uh, we have also had inquiries from, uh, a, a business, uh, from a government institution. And, uh, so just to make you aware, the, the provision in the bylaw is now becoming, uh, coming to people's attention as our sewer rates are increasing.
It's a valid question, but just, just a thought. There's fish plants and stuff, and, uh, other industrial places along Water Street that probably have asked and perhaps received this, or whatever. So, some, sometimes, not all the time, but mostly in the summer, a lot of these, these plants offload water into the harbor. So now, here we have a, we're restricted, and we could be severely penalized if, from the outfall, from our outfall that comes out of our treatment plant down on Water Street. If anything comes out of that, we could be severely charged, or whatever, through the Department of Environment. Uh, I guess what I'm saying is, we have a tidal harbor that comes in and goes out. Everything that goes into the harbor, I would suggest that it flows outward past our, our intake, our out, outtake valve. So, where's that gonna leave us if the, if that water that they, doesn't go into their sewer, goes into their, goes into the harbor, and we, they start doing tests, and things show up along our, our line or in the harbor? Has that ever been thought about or looked at? Not that I, not that I'm, I'm against them getting a, a, a tax exempt, or whatever, but I think there should be some caution there, whatever, just a thought.
Yeah, the, the, um, the testing and the reporting that goes to environment from our plant doesn't come from the end of the pipe, doesn't come from the, the harbor, right? So it, it comes from, from within the operation, is my understanding. And so, uh, you know, it's a valid point that, that, you know, we, we, we are under strict regulation in terms of our effluent, and it's gonna get a lot stricter, as you know, we've talked about that before. Uh, you know, there are, there are businesses, fairly significant businesses, that use a lot of water, and they're, the byproduct of their operation, some of it goes directly into the harbor. We don't know how much treatment it, it receives. But the fact of the matter is, is, is that we do have the provision in the bylaw, and, uh, one of those operations, I don't know if it's more than one, but one of those operations does have, uh, the benefit of, of that provision in our bylaw to be exempt from sewer charges for, for part of their water consumption, a different, so they have two services. We have had an application from another such business, uh, as I said, a, a government agency, and the, I don't mind telling you, uh, at this point, uh, the Department of Transportation. I don't know if you've noticed how they're dealing with ice, uh, this year, but they have, last year they started using a, a premix brine that they spread on the roads before the ice occurs. And so when the ice occurs, it activates the brine residue, and, and the salt is there. Uh, so they use a lot of water, they've actually, uh, got a larger water meter put in to, to fill the brine tank. But all of that water ends up on the, on the roadways throughout the county, none of it in town. And, uh, so they've, they've requested, uh, consideration for, for that, uh, water service not to be charged the, uh, the sewer rate, uh, the, the consumption rate. So, uh, you know, that's an example. Uh, obviously, the one that I shared with you through the agenda, but, uh, you know, what, how this will impact us is, and not that any of those are unfair or unreasonable, but how this will impact us, uh, has to do with when we, when we did our, had our sewer rate study done, and it projected, uh, you know, here's, here's how you should phase out, or phase, phase up your rates, I guess, to, to, to get to full, uh, self-sustaining operation. These changes, uh, changed the water of the beans a little bit, right? Because these are fairly big meters, uh, that we're talking about, so the charges would be fairly significant. Uh, so, you know, we'll have to adjust, adjust some of our assumptions around that. I just want you to be aware that, that it's, we've sort of reached that tipping point where the questions are starting to be asked.
And, and that's why, that's why I brought up the, uh, you know, the suggestion of being offloaded from all the places, and that's something that's on there, and it's not treated by any, just goes...
Well, uh... Yeah, I know it's come up at the waterfront meeting, the last couple of meetings. Uh, one of the operations, uh, Scotia Garden is, is concerned, and I know they want to explore options for, for, for better treatment. Uh, I, I got this sense, and I could be, I could, could have misunderstood, but I thought there was, there was some filtering or something of the effluent before it goes into the harbor for scales or something. Okay, so, I haven't had the tour, but, uh... It is on, on their radar.
Press my mic, because, yeah, you know, there was a lot of discussion around that, it has been for a number of years. Like these, uh, when they offload their, their herring and stuff in the summertime. I mean, we have, we have, uh, a yacht, places where yachts and boats congregate and tie up and that, and that's, there, it's not a good spot for million-dollar vessels, and, uh, when, when they leave, they take a lot of sores and sludge and everything with them, that's on their vessel because of the offload. Now, I, 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 I don't wanna lose the industry, but I don't wanna lose the auditing. I think there's, there could be a compromise where it was suggested where there would be a, a tunnel or a tube put out in the, in the, when they're offloading herring or whatever, so it would go out towards more in, into the middle of the harbor than right down at, by, by the ends of the wharfs and stuff. So hopefully, that waterfront, waterfront development would be looking at that, or we will look at that as, uh, part of something that we can help, help the industry with, and, uh, perhaps come, draw up some plans or something. Just a thought.
Danny, just for your information, the Waterfront Corporation is setting up, has set up a committee to look at that, this, and, uh, I think Jeff is on that committee. Next item, uh, next item is the Adopt a Book Campaign, April Fool's Trivia Challenge.
So we'll need, uh, we'll need some, some people to participate, if the town is going to participate. I assume we are, as, as, I think, defending champs? Yeah, so... April first. April first. Yeah, April Fool's Challenge.
We should make a, a commitment with the team members to be determined, uh, which, which...
So is it agreed we'll put a team in?
Do we need a, a motion for a team to enter, and then, uh, and then we'll...
Linda will assemble a team.
So we have a motion and a seconder, okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. We have, under additions, we have, under additions, we have the Bantam A Provincial, do you wanna come back, your worship? So we have a, it was put on the agenda, a Bantam A request, I think, is what we're dealing with, is that right?
So the request has come in, it, the event is actually in next fiscal year, so you could deal with it one of two ways, you could incorporate as part of your grants to organizations for that fiscal year.
That's next fiscal year?
Yeah, the event is in April.
The next fiscal year?
Next fiscal year.
About 2018?
Oh.
It's this, it's April the 7th, 2016.
2016, yeah. No, it's next fiscal year. April 1st is the turnover, right? So, so that's when your grants to organizations, that's the fiscal year that your grants are for, so you could incorporate in your consideration for grants to organizations, if you wish.
I think that's the best option.
No, but we did, but they have the, we have the paperwork here to send it all into the budget, so.
But this is for 2000, okay.
Put your lights on, I'm gonna have to take control.
What a good information.
I'm just teasing.
Your worship, your light is on.
I was just, I was just gonna say, we need to have the motion to put it in with the budget for this year, with the grants to organizations.
Do we know, do we know, do we know the amount?
Twenty-five hundred. Okay, so I just made that motion.
Motion, is there a seconder for that motion? Seconded by Counselor Phil. Any more questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Request for, request for decision on lost or stolen cards.
Okay, so Caroline's done a nice request for decision, it's basically to charge a five-dollar fee, if anybody loses their reloadable transit pass.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
That was easy.
Counselor Phil had a, an item, Phil?
Greg Barrow.
Solicitor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, the Town of Yarmouth sends its most heartfelt congratulations on Greg Barrow's well-deserved Queens Council appointment. QC.
That's the next motion.
That's why it's a good idea to get motions ahead of time.
He's automatically smarter now.
So, moved by Counselor Phil, seconded by Sandy. Counselor Sandy, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Congratulations, Greg.
Yes, thank you.
Now, Phil, Phil, you're under open streets.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, staff, explore, and/or implement the switch open the streets option, and I think everybody got, Caroline, did you send that to everybody, only to a?
Just to the council's vote, just talking to it about, do you want me to?
I'd like you to send that to everybody, and I'll should maybe come up and say a couple of words about the switch open the streets. Interesting concept.
So, Switch Open Street is this really cool, regular event that happens in Halifax. It was implemented by some planners, who was looking to generate traffic in different areas in the city, pedestrian traffic, foot traffic, not cars, and allow for some small local businesses, and like, just engaging opportunities on the weekends for residents. So the idea is they close down a street, they put up pylons, they invite retailers or different people who might wanna offer classes, they have street chalk and food and all that kind of stuff, and they just open the street up on Sundays to the people, they give it back to people instead of cars.
Go down there. Plus, the other thing, I was thinking, maybe even something if you could, I think it's a great idea, and I always like to see it implemented, but if you did something maybe between Grant Street and Parade Street, and incorporate Frost Park, and do something like the old Fireman's Picnic and Fair that they used to have behind, behind the library, might be a great idea for a community group, or an organization, C-Fest, you know, the antique car show, somebody really get behind and really push it, and I think it'd be a great addition, and I think you could do it, you know, you could do, maybe up on Brunswick Street Extension one day, you could do a thousand-meter, thousand-yard yard sale with a band on one end and something else, but I think something that could be explored, and it's something that was brought out to other community groups or organizations, it'd be something neat and interactive in the Town of Yarmouth. But you're gonna send that information out to all the other counselors?
I can do it right now.
That hasn't got them? Good. No, that's right, that's right.
I just, I just have a question as a citizen. So we are given permission, but we're not organizing the events. The events are gonna be, get permission from the town to use, say, John Street or Second Street on a certain day, or, as Counselor Phil has suggested, and then we would do our part, but not actually organize any events?
Yeah, that's the idea, this, the, we kind of offer to close down the street at no cost, at a certain time and day, and then the community kind of rallies around it, and does whatever they'd like to do with the street.
So we have a motion, have a motion for policy?
Yeah, it would be, it sounds like a policy.
Yeah. Counselor Ken?
This, this has come up before, and if my recollection is right, I remember the Historical Society wanted to do that, if I'm, I can be corrected, but I remember a number of years ago, but the Traffic Authority said that was not permissible, that he could not do that. Because I remember they have a huge sale every year, the yard sale, massive yard sale, now they have since moved it to Zion Baptist, and one of the reasons was because the street congested, or the former Zion Baptist property, I should say. They moved it because they couldn't get that street closed, so I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if the Traffic Authority's gonna permit that or not.
Jeff?
It suggests the policy be developed in conjunction with the Traffic Authority, if he has any particular streets or scenarios where he wouldn't want a street closed, then just work that into the policy, yeah.
You've heard the discussion, any more questions? Question being called, all those in favor, please say aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Item 9E, budget, Jeff?
So I have a presentation, it'll take about forty-five minutes. I'm, about forty-five. If you, forty-five if there's no questions.
Forty-five minutes?
No, no, we could defer it. We could defer, I'm suggesting we defer it.
I wouldn't mind making a motion to defer it, and I actually, in all honesty, I said to Jeff yesterday, it's gonna be a long meeting, I didn't even think he'd have time to pull this together, so good on you for doing that, because of all the water stuff, we wanted to take care of that first. So can we defer it, is it appropriate for a separate meeting?
No, we will tie it into the future.
Okay, all right, and to Ken's point, we'll get the dates out too, as soon as possible. Yeah. So, so yeah, so just a reminder for everybody to send the dates that you're not available, if we're going away in the next couple months, that you're aware of now, get those to Linda.
I agree.
Yep, good. To get the dates, any dates that you're not available in the next couple months, send them to Linda as soon as possible.
I'm available any day except Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Friday, Saturday, yeah, okay, good. Thank you, Deputy.
Is there, no in-camera items, and at this point, maybe a motion for adjournment?
You're like the closer, Jimmy, come in and finish her off.